We will call the September ninth, 2020 Ormond Beach City Commission meeting to order. It is seven o'clock, and I hope you felt welcomed this evening by the Finance Director, Kelly McGuire, our Assistant Finance Director, Chris Bile, Police Captain, Chris Ruse, and Deputy Fire Chief, Tom Bazana, served as our greeters tonight. We had quite a greeting compliment to welcome you. I'd like to do some introductions of the people who are sitting up in front of you and our staff. Our Recording Secretary, Cassidy Ritz, City Clerk down in front, Colby Salenta, Commissioner from Zone One, Dwight Selby, our Deputy Mayor and Zone Two Commissioner, Troy Kent, Commissioner Susan Persis from Zone Three, Commissioner Rob Littleton from Zone Four, City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, City Attorney Randy Hayes, and for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would silence your cellphones, please rise for the invocation provided by Chaplain Sam Mercado with Advent Health Pastor.
Almighty Father, this evening we come together to ask for your presence. As the City Council goes about the businesses of our city in Ormond Beach, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and for this assembled council. Grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Give them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And Father, I ask for personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Give them wisdom to please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Ormond Beach. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
The adoption of the fiscal year 2020-2021 proposed millage rates and tentative budget item is Agenda Item Number 4A, and I'll ask the City Clerk to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2020-114, a resolution adopting proposed millage rates for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, establishing a date, time, and place for a public hearing to adopt final millage rates and final budget, and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2020-114, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. Per Florida statute, I'm required to state that the proposed millage rate for the city of Ormond Beach necessary to fund the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget is 3.9068 mils. This rate is equal to the rolled-back rate of 3.9068 mils. The tentative debt service millage rates are 0.0310 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.0930 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. Any comments that anyone would like to add regarding the tax rate or the budget? Deputy Mayor Kent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to really applaud this commission, the leadership on this commission to be able to give our residents a tax break during a global pandemic. It is obvious that we have our financial house in order, and we take that extremely seriously. I am so proud to be able to vote yes for this tonight, as I said, to give relief to our taxpayers and to know that we have a plan in place for this year and next year and the following year, and to continue, if we need to, to make sure that our financial house stays in order. All of this while reducing no services. I applaud this commission. Ms. Shanahan, I applaud your staff, especially your budget staff as well. But not just them, all of your department directors, who have sharpened their pencils and done more with less for a very long time. So, yeah, Mr. Mayor, thanks for that opportunity for that comment.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else? Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank staff. They do all the hard work preparing the budget based off of this millage rate. This rate and the corresponding budget shows that our government actually cares and feels for our residents and our business owners. We didn't cut essential services, and we did not defund the police. Considering COVID-19 and the effects of the lockdowns, I am very proud of this budget, and I will be voting yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll just add, this is a budget that was put together with quite a bit of citizen input. The OB/Life series provided a great deal of feedback, and basically you asked and we listened. There are road and stormwater improvements in this budget, Central Park Bridge and Observation Deck improvements, downtown sidewalk renovations, neighborhood traffic calming, and facility hardening, all items that came up during the OB/Life series, and so they were incorporated into this budget. It takes effort to get that citizen engagement, and this commission's leadership and our staff putting forth that effort, we were lucky to make that happen this year. So, at this point, I'll explain that this is a public hearing. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak or ask questions prior to adoption of the tentative millage rate and budget, now would be the time. Seeing none, we just need a motion and a second to adopt the tentative operating millage rate of 3.9068 mils and the debt service millage rates of 0.0310 and 0.0930.
Mr. Mayor, I'm proud to make the motion for both the budget and the millage rate.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Kent, properly seconded by Commissioner Persis. Let's see. Let me state that the tentative operating millage of 3.9068 mils is equal to the rolled-back millage rate. The resolution also includes adoption of the tentative debt service millage rates of 0.0310 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.0930 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. And, Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and the operating millage rate is set at 3.9068 mils, which is equal to the rolled-back millage rate of 3.9068 mils. We have to follow the statutory procedure when we adopt a budget, and it's a lot of language, so I apologize for that, but I didn't see Kelly show any signs of concern, and I didn't see Randy show any signs of concern, so I think we covered everything. And now we will move to 4B.
Ordinance Number 2020-44, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 2020-44, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. Just need a motion and second?
I move approval of Ordinance Number 2020-44.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and at this time, I do not hear any objection to closing the public hearing, and so we will deem the public hearing closed. Move to audience remarks. Were there any audience remarks?
No, sir.
Good deal. And then we'll move to approval of the minutes. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? These are the minutes from the August 18th, 2020 virtual City Commission meeting. Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. The consent agenda, the action proposed for the consent agenda is stated for each item. Unless a commissioner removes an item, no discussion on individual items will occur, and a single motion will approve all items. Do any members of the commission wish to pull any of the consent agenda items? Just need a motion and a second.
I move the consent agenda.
Second, the motion.
Colby?
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Any commissioners wish to comment on consent agenda items?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on Item A and Item L. These are, Item A is our annual contract with the Ormond Beach Chamber of Commerce, and Item L is the similar agreement with the Ormond Memorial Art Museum. And I just, you know, these are things that could easily be cut in difficult economic times as we're in right now, but again, in unison with earlier comments about the millage rate and the budget, you know, we're able to continue to support these organizations that really dramatically improve the quality of life in Ormond Beach and make it a great place to live and work, and so I'm just happy to see that happen. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Littleton?
Items with D and Item L, the FAA is paying 100% of the costs for Item D, and for Item L, FDOT's paying 100% and under the GPA or JPA. Just great work by our staff and why we're able to do what we do with the budget.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Littleton, and we will move now to public hearings. We'll open the public hearings, and, Colby, if you would, please read 8A.
Ordinance Number 2020-45, an ordinance approving the final plat of Pellicar Acres, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 2020-45, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby, and I'll ask Planning Director Stephen Spraker to speak about this item.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker. This is a request for a subdivision of land. The property is along Leeway Trail shown here. It intersects with Warden Trail. The property is 25 acres, so they're proposing to subdivide it into five acre tracts. There was a preliminary plat that the City Commission approved in May 26, 2020. The final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat. We've also had an independent survey or review that the final plat staff is recommending approval, and here for any questions.
Any questions for Stephen?
Just a comment.
Deputy Mayor Kent?
Yep. I just wanted to say how refreshing it is to see a landowner come in and take 25 acres and break them up into five acre plats and not come before us and try to put 380 homes in an area that certainly can't handle it. So I just wanted to applaud the property owner.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you. Anything else for Stephen? Stephen, I think we're good. Thank you, sir. I don't have any cards on 8A. Just need a motion and a second.
Move approval?
Second, the motion.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will close the public hearings and move to staff action items and start with 9A. Again, we go to Planning Director Stephen Spraker.
Good evening. This is a continuation of the August 18th City Commission meeting. Just a quick summary. There were three individuals who were special event hosts who made comments. There was comments that the hosts were committed to implementing standards of the CDC if the special event were to be approved. There was a discussion of the financial importance of conducting these special events, and there was also concern that the special events could create concerns for visitors in terms of making them sick from the virus. City Commission staff discussion items, there was concern regarding allowing events may lead to illness and death from the virus. There was support if the businesses could follow the CDC regulations and implement the health guidelines. There was a discussion that the attendees should be able to make their own decisions whether or not to attend that event, and that they would know the risk and can make their own decision. There was a desire to see the COVID trends over the couple of weeks, which then led to the continuance. There was a discussion that the attendees that are coming, they're coming with or without the special event, which would actually put more pressure on the indoor spaces of these businesses. And there was a discussion that the city would be relying on voluntary compliance by the attendees to follow health guidelines. There is not a strong enforcement mechanism due to the health guidelines being voluntary, so we can't go out and cite or penalize people for not following the CDC guidelines. Over the last couple of weeks, the COVID numbers have stabilized, if not decreased. This is the case percentage positive in the state of Florida, so that's the entire state of Florida. It's hard to read, but you can see in the graph that they've kind of stabilized, if not starting to recede a little bit. Volusia County is kind of following that same track. The last couple of days, the positivity rate, it looks like it's gone up somewhat. I'm not sure if there are more cases or, you know, more reporting. And then again, these are the case numbers, so you see kind of the up and down, but overall fairly consistent. There are three actions or three policy directions that we're seeking from the commission. The first is within the North US1 corridor on allowing special event permits as part of Biketoberfest. If there is a desire to allow, what we did is we took the information provided by Destination Daytona. They had a safety standard list, which we kind of took pieces and parts. We thought that was very well done, and we talked to some other communities. We believe there should be a distance separation between vendors or a physical barrier, so tents aren't stacked on top of each other, so that would provide a little more spacing. There should be signage for reminding vendors and attendees of the COVID measures, including social distancing and face covering requirements, to have face coverings available if attendees either forgot them or lost them or whatever. One of the Destination Daytona items was vendors are required to determine the appropriate number of shoppers that may enter the tents, post that number, and then provide hand sanitizer in those vending locations. So there's kind of a constant reminding of the social distancing and the face covers. Requirement for hand washing and sanitization stations, and then a provision of a cleaning person or firm to continue to disinfect contact points and sanitize key areas. So basically, they're sanitizing their own facilities. The second aspect that we're seeking commission direction is regarding outdoor concerts as part of Biketoberfest. So typically with special events, concerts would be allowed, so that's something that we're seeking direction from the commission. And then what about properties outside the Biketoberfest US1 corridor? Our current policy has not been to allow special events outside, you know, basically since COVID started, we haven't allowed special events. So is there a desire to allow those or wait until the governor's Phase 3 reopening plan? So that's kind of a quick summary, and I know there are property owners who'd like to address the commission also.
Great. Any questions for Stephen at this time?
Yeah, I just, I, yeah, Mayor, Stephen, on the third point, special event direction outside, is that geographical, or is that time, or is that both?
So throughout the city, since COVID started, we haven't allowed any special event permits.
Right.
So we're basically seeking either confirmation or direction that we're going to continue that policy until Phase 3.
Right.
So churches or whatever, we're basing them telling them right now that we're not issuing special event permits. And there have been some inquiries.
So just general direction on should we open up or consider opening up?
Correct.
Special event permits?
Or wait till Phase 3.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm glad that's in there.
I have questions.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes. What, when you say private property on the third item, can you give me some examples of what you mean by private property?
It could be a church that wants to do a fish fry. It could be a furniture store that wants to hold a tent sale. There's been some properties that want to do grand openings, and so they're seeking to do grand openings. So those are kind of some of the examples of the special event requests we get.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll go to, thank you, Stephen, for now. The cards that I have, and we will start with Dean Pepe. On deck will be Karen Garrus.
Good evening. I'm here this evening on behalf of Destination Daytona, asking for your leadership, cooperation, and focus in making this decision. There are businesses like ours who rely heavily on the motorcycle vendors for much-needed revenue. In fact, vendor revenue is one of the largest components of our annual revenue, so this is a particularly critical decision for us. This decision is also vitally important to other businesses and resident employees who rely on this income to carry them through the year, especially this year. Please do not lose focus on the fact that regardless of your decision, this event will not be canceled, and visitors will be coming here to enjoy what we have to offer. The best news of all, as you focus on the issue at hand, is that having the outside vendors is not a negative. It is actually a positive because it will help us to socially distance the visitors as they roam outdoors on our property, and importantly, it will allow us to generate the revenue needed to take all the measures we've committed to take. Moreover, everything pertaining to outside vendors remains contained on our private properties and does not spill onto Granada Boulevard or other public property like on Main Street in Daytona, so our situation in Ormond is much different. During the last meeting, Commissioner Kent asked whether bars are open, and the answer is yes. Bars with food licenses like Saints and Centers Pub are open, and we will be selling beverage in single-use glasses, proper distancing, sanitizer available, all staff wearing masks and signage promoting safety measures. Sturgis was mentioned last meeting. Attached, you'll find a report from the city of Sturgis website regarding the city's local testing program and the impact on the town residents and city workers, which the mayor of Sturgis proclaimed a success. Reports of out-of-state visitors have catchy headlines, but the actual positive report numbers, not predictions, as a percentage of attendees is miniscule. Last meeting, I mentioned the pitfall in restricting Ormond businesses over unreliable statewide data and constantly changing information about the virus. We've all seen the reports, even with uncertainty, our emergency room visits and positivity rates are going down. In fact, the governor was in town recently urging people to travel here and throughout the state as he should. I hope we have earned your focused consideration in this decision, starting with our cooperation when we annexed into the city of Ormond Beach and how we have conducted our business since becoming a part of this city. With your approval, which we need tonight so we can prepare properly, we can move forward with getting ready to work hard to conduct this event as safely as possible. Thank you for allowing me to express how important this is to our business and our family. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Karen Garrus.
Thank you. We're all aware that COVID-19 has seriously affected all of our lives and all of our well-being, as well as our business life and our business well-being. We're all striving for some sort of a wellness stability, both personally and in business, and hoping that if you continue forward with Bike Fest, this will give us a little bit of relief, of which we're suffering from drastically, that we need right now. Bike Fest brings a lot of people into our community, bringing money, and a lot of other things that we need in our business life. Most of our businesses have unfortunately been closed since the last event, and I think that's probably hurting all of us right now more than we had thought it would. We're all taking precautions, adhering to the safety rules, but we're still sinking into a deep wall of debt due to the restrictions and all of our closings. If properly handled, I really think that we could proceed with the event within the parameters of safe practices. Many businesses will not be able to recover from these last five months of being closed. The ones that do are limping already pretty badly. I know that we are all spending all of our tax dollars to try to make our businesses, help our businesses reopen, but it's been really tough these last five months. Some are trying to recover from the last event, and we really haven't even been able to do that because we've been closed. So we're hoping that you vote to reopen the businesses and allow us to have this event to maybe help us along a little bit. Unless we can open our businesses, I'm sure that a lot of businesses probably are not going to be able to open, so, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next is John Krotz, followed by Jacqueline Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Krotz from JMP Cycles, Destination Daytona. JMP Cycles continues to monitor all credible and factual updates from rallies and events across America. We continue to hear very encouraging reports, even weeks after the events have wrapped up. To what Dean said, the city of Sturgis conducted mass COVID testing for the citizens, welcoming hundreds of thousands of visitors during the 80th Motorcycle Rally. Total of 650 volunteers were given the option for free COVID testing, and again, it was very miniscule, only around 25 came in with anything as significant positive, but with no symptoms. A group of researchers from San Diego State, and I do want to point this out because this is floating around, but a group of researchers from San Diego State and IZA.org tested a method of cellphone tracing to create a prediction model that claims as many as 270,000 people have contracted the virus from the Sturgis event. However, their method has been discredited by many researchers and medical institutes, stating that it is reckless to publish this type of data without any peer review, especially when the numbers aren't even close to matching the reports that we're getting through the CDC and the FDA in this case. Other noteworthy news reported by the New York Times, according to the FDA and the CDC, the testing is too hypersensitive. Virology testing should not exceed 33 cycle tests or amplification, otherwise false positives will grow significantly. It's been discovered that only a few states have actually recorded the amplification on tests that they offer, tests they have overampli, and on tests they have overamplified these tests. It is believed that Massachusetts should have only reported about 10% of their cases as positive, and New York should have only reported about 43% of their cases positive, according to the FDA, CDC, and many virologists that work with the CDC and FDA. We are currently way behind on placing all of our orders and getting ready for Biketoberfest. We typically at this time would have probably a half a million dollars of the product on its way to us, and at this point, we can't even place those orders. In addition, I got several people that we will be hiring from the local community to help us work for the event. So at this point, it's critical that we get a decision, hopefully to say yes, so we can get started in putting the community back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Jacqueline Jones, followed by Sally Stevens.
Hello. Sorry, this is very last minute, so my speech isn't really planned, but I thought somebody who has been to every Bike Week since the pandemic should be here, just because I've witnessed it all myself. I witnessed Myrtle Beach implementing, you know, the day before Bike Week started, they did a 11 o'clock, no consumption on premises, and in doing that, the only thing they affected was the money the business was making. In Sturgis, I was just there. They implemented nothing, and the rally went fine. We have a group on Facebook with about 100,000 people in it, and they all went, they get tested for COVID. Now, the ones that said that they, I have friends who went to Sturgis, they got tested. They said they went to Sturgis, they all tested positive. Half of those went to another place the next day. Didn't say they went to Sturgis, they tested negative because they have normal jobs. And this is, you know, accurate information from actual people who worked there and went there. I only know of one person who got sick and got put in the hospital. I know a lot that got tested positive. None of them had symptoms. The people people are forgetting about is the bartenders and the little guys, you know, the ones that come in to do the trash, or they travel. A lot of people depend just solely on Bike Week every year. I've seen the vendor permits getting pulled from outside, and all it does is consume everybody inside. So people are coming, whether the permits are issued or not. It's just a matter of, are they all going to be clustered inside a place? And like I said, the only people that are being affected are the business owners. I currently am helping a bar in Ormond from going under because they solely depend on the Bike Week, and the whole pandemic thing has really messed with them. The only ones that it messes up, it's messing with their money, that's it. It doesn't affect anybody except these small businesses and these people that travel for rallies. I don't think people realize that these vendors spend all year, you know, making their jewelry and getting their stuff together. and getting their stuff together, and when the rallies don't happen, it's all done. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Jacqueline. And Sally Stevens will be followed by Stephen Pinland.
Hello. I'm Sally Stevens from the Iron Horse Saloon, one of the owners up there on North US-1. And we'd like to just outline, and actually, it pretty much echoes what everyone else has said, of what our plans would be if you allow us to have vendors for Biketoberfest. We will, of course, post the signs in several locations around our property, encouraging the social distancing. We'll place our hand-sanitizing stations all throughout the property and encourage them to be used, and we'll suggest the wearing of masks, and we will provide them if someone needs them. As you know, up there, our event is held almost entirely outside. We have very limited inside activities. So our vendors have always been set up in a rotation so that there's different things going on at different times. There'll be food, then there'll be jewelry, then there'll be all around the property, and it keeps people moving when the band is playing and then they're not, and then there's something going on all around. This will help us. We have two acres. This will help us disperse the people, too, because, as it's been said, the people are coming, and we want to be able to service them in the safest way possible. Most of our vendors are set up in permanent booths with wood in between them, so that wouldn't be a problem. And the few tents that we have, we wouldn't have any trouble separating those to be a safe distance from each other. We have no big names planned for this year due to the time restraints, everything's so late. We haven't advertised any big bands or anything that would draw a huge crowd. We anticipate a crowd, but not a huge crowd this year. And we also haven't done any advertising either that would, you know, draw huge crowds. We do anticipate a lower-than-usual attendance, and I think that the precautions that we can put in place and follow through with, with our vendors and our customers, I think we'll be able to safely manage the people that do show up. We do ask you to allow the vendors because, as it's been said, they really add to our ability to spread the people out and keep them from clumping in one place. So thank you for considering our vendors and our Biketoberfest. It means so much to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. We'll move to Stephen Pinland, followed by Steve Fritz.
Thank you. I don't have anything written, but the reason I wanted to speak tonight was I've been to every one of the events so far, Myrtle Beach, and saw the rules and things that happened there. I was in Sturgis for three weeks. I oversee a vendor, Bayer Aspirin, Aleve, Alka-Seltzer, those type of products, and another one called Delta Defense. And I was in Sturgis, like I said, three weeks, and I just recently got back from Laconia, New Hampshire, that had a rescheduled event. What I saw in Myrtle Beach was they brought the time down for the bars and all the restaurants and stuff, and what I saw was people started early, and they bunched up and got in there in groups instead of spreading out where you can say, hey, I'll go eat dinner, and then maybe I'll go to drink and go do something else. Instead, it got the opposite effect. Sturgis, you know, I saw vendors at the Harley dealership, I saw them downtown, I saw them out in the campgrounds, people out riding, riding from one event to another, and I think, as you well know, if they're riding from one event to another, they're out in the open air and not always bunched up. Laconia, I just got back from there this morning, and they had the very opposite. They had no vendors, and basically what happened, the establishments that were there, the bars and restaurants, were pretty much overwhelmed with people standing outside in line, which created a whole nother crowd and then upset people. And as my sister always says, I'm kind of a social butterfly. I like to talk to everybody and see what their perspective is and everything else, and a lot of people left that town with a very bad taste in their mouth, because a lot of people that are coming in from out of town don't realize, they're coming no matter what. They're going to come, just like Ocean City, Maryland, they're going to be going there. And when they get there and they don't know what's going on, and then all of a sudden they don't find anything to do, they leave upset. And I was at the Plaza Hotel in the early 70s and 80s for 23 years, back when we had spring break and all the raucous and everything, and I saw, you know, both sides of the story. But I do know a lot of hotels on this, on the beach depend on this business. It's not just bars, and this isn't about bars. It's about all the hospitality, people, the hotels, the restaurants, the car dealerships. When I was over there with spring break during MTV, I saw the trickle-down effect. I know Mr. Kelly and the people that have car dealers and stuff, and everybody made money, it trickled down. I'm hoping that you think, think about it, I do believe that the vendors do give it a complexity, that people will drive around and see other things, and it moves people around instead of leaving them in small areas. So thank you. I'm not very good at this, so.
You did great.
Did very well.
Thank you, Stephen. Steve Fritz is up next, followed by Melissa Pinland. Okay, Steve's going to wave, and Melissa Pinland, Melissa, you'll be followed by Bill Bay.
My husband and I own several businesses here in Ormond Beach, and have lived here most of our lives, and I definitely understand the seriousness of the virus. My parents are 80 years old and live just north of the US-1 entertainment district. I am Sally's partner, but as importantly is that my husband and I have Hot Action Sportswear, which is a business that has 40 to 50 employees, most of those residents here in Ormond, and we've been here for 30 years. We rely so heavily on all of these places that open up and all of these, all of these events, and it's just a little different perspective than just the bars and just the restaurants. We're their supplier, and we have a lot of employees that we keep year-round, and it's difficult. This has probably been our most difficult year in over 20 years. Our revenues are less than they've been in more than 20 years, which is hard to say because we've worked very hard to get up there and be consistent, and Daytona is a tourist town, so these, and we're very event-driven. So keeping in mind that, of course, it's very important to us that, you know, the events happen up on the North US-1 corridor, it's every bit as important to all those employees that we have on the supplier end of things and that we're trying to keep around as long as we possibly can. It's been incredibly hard. We went a very large, we went 40,000 square feet of warehouse space on Division Avenue, you know, from one of your very large landowners here, and, you know, it's tough. We've been in tough discussions all the way around, and would hope that you would at least think, just because of that trickle-down effect, it's real, it's big, and we're all struggling. So please, you know, I think we will definitely take into consideration how serious it is to enforce all the regulations or all the rules that you all ask us to, whether it's social distancing, sanitizing stations, whatever those rules are, we want to comply, we want to do everything we can to make it work because we want to continue on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And last but not least is Bill Bay.
All right. We did receive some written comments. Some of those folks spoke tonight, some of them just provided it in writing. The commissioners have received those, and I'm sure read them in preparation for the meeting. Dean Pepe provided written comments, Bill Bay provided written comments, Brian Holt provided written comments, and Fred Bramblett provided written comments. Commission, that is all the cards that I have, so it's open for us for discussion at this time, and I don't know if anybody wants to jump in first. Deputy Mayor Kent, I see you grabbing your mic.
Sure. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, we've had a little bit of time to let this marinate with us. I'm glad that we decided to kind of put, press the pause button on this. The numbers have gone down in Florida, the numbers have gone down in Volusia County. I'm very comfortable allowing the vendors on the North US-1 area of Ormond Beach, and, you know, should there be any restrictions regarding outdoor concerts as part of Biketoberfest, I'm okay not putting any restrictions there. And as far as the third one, special event direction outside of Biketoberfest, North US Highway 1 corridor and private property, I believe those should be allowed as well. So we had time to think about this, we had time to look at some data that came in, and I think that the speakers and the comments, both pro and con for this, were very well-thought out. I know that, you know, Sally Stevens has been with the Iron Horse since day one and has been an Ormond resident longer than I've been alive. And, you know, I think any type of relief that we can do for these businesses and for our community members that are going to work at these businesses is a positive thing to do. I also think it's important to note, because you heard several speakers say, they're coming regardless. The people are coming to Biketoberfest, they're going to be here. So do you want to allow outdoor vendors where we can space them out a little bit, or do you not? Well, I didn't attend Sturgis, I didn't attend South Carolina, I didn't, but we had people today come before us and say they did, and this is what it looked like when there were vendors and when there weren't vendors. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm comfortable approving the vendors and everything else I've already mentioned.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, am comfortable with approving the vendors, the, but I wanted to say that, first of all, I wanted to say that the speakers, I am so impressed with the comments from every single speaker tonight. You know, once again, these are, so many of you live in Ormond Beach, and whether you live in Ormond Beach or work in Ormond Beach, you love this community, and you showed your passion for it by your positive comments and your decorum. The way you delivered what you had to say in a very respectful, informative manner is extremely important, and I just wanted, I wanted to compliment you for that because I thought that that was, I honestly didn't expect that. I thought it might be, I thought there might be some hostility because people are frustrated and they need an answer, they need to know. And I think it also, also the breadth of people that spoke showed the depth and size of these special events, how many different companies and different people are involved. And it's not just about the owners, but there are so many employees, vendors, suppliers, landlords, hotels, restaurants, et cetera, that benefit from this. And I personally know several people who rely very heavily on the money that they make outside of their regular employment on special events in this area, and it's a critical part of their annual income to their household. And so I will definitely, I'm definitely in favor of the guidelines as staff has put out here for the vendors.
I am, too.
I would, relative to outdoor concerts, my, obviously, I would be concerned about packing too many people in, so my guidance there would be that there'd be, you know, ample social distancing. And relative to the third point, I could go one step further, and I want to, I want to mention one, which is this appears to be restricted just to private property. Is that correct, Stephen? Are you looking for guidance on, for instance, well, let me just, Joyce Peppin reached out to me regarding the walk to N Polio, which will be on the bridge and underneath, you know, a walk both directions of the bridge, over and back. So that's not on private property, that's on public property. So I could support those also, private and public property for those kinds of events. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll first off say that I'm so impressed, actually, by the petition drive that the commission received, though a friend came to me and helped, I helped draft the language a little bit, I put my hands off of it, and it actually turned out to be a grassroots effort from stakeholders in this area who have an interest in a safe and fun Biketoberfest. It's been shown that Sturgis wasn't a big scary spreader, as all the numbers and stats about the virus are trending down. And the reason for that is that professionals know how to follow CDC guidelines, and they will, and they actually want to. Not exactly every biker is a spring chicken, you know, so they don't want to catch the virus themselves. So I would say I'm definitely, I would definitely allow the special event permits. I would not have any restrictions regarding outdoor activities or at concerts, and I am for doing the special events on private property.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Persis.
Thank you. Well, I'm going last intentionally because I'm going to totally be elvoted tonight. But not that, not that, you know, what I want to say, first of all, is thank you to everyone that spoke. The petitions were amazing, and I feel in this community they want Biketoberfest here. I mean, that is, there's no doubt. I do have concerns, and I just want to just share a few of my concerns because, you know, I want to go to sleep at night and feel good about everything and feel good that everybody's safe. And the first one is we're still under the governor's state of emergency due to the COVID pandemic, so that's a concern for me. And Ormond Beach residents are our most precious asset, and their health and well-being should be, you know, paramount over anything that we do. You know, events that draw a large crowds of people are super-spreeder events, basically, that's what they are. They include social gatherings, weddings, parties, and motorcycle rallies, and people have gotten sick at other places. I mean, they are, and it seems to me that people are getting sick, but they're not getting as sick as they were when the pandemic first came out, so, I mean, I think that's a positive. But people are going to get sick because it's going to be hard to control people in a concert. You can't social distance people at a concert. People are up there yelling and screaming, and, you know, they're excited, they want to sing together, and, you know, you've had a beer, and you're having fun, and that's what you want to do. So that concerns me a little bit with a concert. I know all the vendors will do everything they can to keep, you know, to follow the CBC guidelines and do everything to keep everyone safe, but we have no way to control, to control what people do. We don't have any kind of law ordinance in Ormond Beach. We can't enforce the safety guidelines, that's impossible. So I feel like it's going to put our employees at risk, specifically permit and building inspectors, code enforcement officers, the police and fire, and paramedic personnel. And I could go on, but I know this is going to pass, and it doesn't, that doesn't, it doesn't upset me because I love this town and I love Bike Week. My husband and I have had two Harleys, we don't have them anymore, but we all have always attended Biketoberfest and Bike Week, and it was just such a fun part of our life. But I'm just, I guess I am still a little nervous about the coronavirus. I definitely am against outdoor concerts, I cannot vote for that. The special events on private property, I'm okay with that, and I'll probably, I will probably just go ahead and vote for, you know, allowing the vendors because it's going to pass. And, but I just felt, I just feel the need to speak, you know, how I feel really deep down inside, and I just don't want anyone to get sick and have any fatalities in Ormond Beach. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll go last, I guess, batting cleanup. I, too, was impressed with the quality of the speakers tonight and the input. I thought you conducted yourselves well, your comments were pertinent and well-stated, and appreciate the information that you provided. I think, and I want to thank the commission for their indulgence at the last meeting, your patience in putting off a decision till tonight, because what happened is what I was expecting to happen, hoping to happen, is that the numbers would continue to trend downward, and I suspect by the time the Biketoberfest gets here, we will have been opened in Phase Three for at least a couple weeks. That's kind of reading the tea leaves on my part, I can't guarantee that, but the numbers have been trending that direction, and there's been some hints, enough from the governor's office that there's been some news articles written about that. So I'm written about that. So, I'm hopeful that that's the case. This vote tonight is not about whether Bike Toberfest happens or not. We don't have that power. We don't control that event. We don't run that event. We don't have anything to do with that event. There are other entities in Volusia County that, that control that. And I think Sally, probably Sally Stevens, made a great point that, just like other events we've seen around the nation, there may be some crowds, but not huge crowds. It'll be a greatly dampened event, just because people are being careful. People are behaving like adults. They're following the guidelines. They're doing what they know they're supposed to do, hand washing, staying home if they're sick, maintaining six feet of distance, wearing a mask, and environmental practices such as cleaning and disinfection. Folks are heeding those CDC guidelines, and so, that's another reason I feel comfortable voting to allow, what this vote is, is to, whether or not to allow outdoor vendors as a special event permit, the outdoor vendor part of that. And so, subject to the COVID-19 safety plan, as laid out here by staff, and Dean Pepe, thank you for providing a safety plan that was satisfactory to, to staff, a written plan that is detailed. I am in favor as well of allowing that. Outdoor concerts, I'm torn on. I don't know how you do an outdoor concert socially distanced, but if you can show that you can do it, I'd be a lot more comfortable with it. And I'll ask either Stephen or Joyce, do you know, as far as the Phase Three numbers, what size groups are allowed in Florida's Phase Three reopening?
I don't know.
Don't know right off the cuff. That would have an impact on whether I would go for outdoor concerts or not at this point. And similarly, for private events on public or private property, if you can do those in a socially-distanced manner, the walk, I think Commissioner Selby referenced, if those folks can walk six feet apart and police that themselves and actually accomplish it, I'd be comfortable approving that. If they can't, then I'm not sure we need to be encouraging that at this point. Large groups, groups of over 100 or 200 or in the thousands, I don't think we're quite ready, quite ready to go there. So, I think we have full unanimous consent, although with some reluctance by Commissioner Persis, on the outdoor vendors. We split up a little bit on the outdoor concerts part. I had maybe three to two, or not quite sure where that totally shook out. And then on the private events, I think it was three to two to allow those. So, if somebody wants to make a motion, we can take a stab at that. Do you, are you just looking for direction on points two and three, Stephen, or an emotion on the outdoor vendors?
We're really just looking for direction. So, you know, what I heard was, you're okay with all three. I understand three to two on the second two items. We will ask for outdoor concert plans if they're, if they're doing that. I know Destination Daytona is not having any large events, and they've already said they're going to have seats socially distanced. So, from my perspective, I have the direction I need. I don't know, Randy, if you need anything else?
No, I think that's fine. You know, we're still operating under the ordinance that the commission approved back in March, that delegates certain authority to the city manager. She smartly brought this issue back to you, so she can take your policy direction and have it implemented through her staff, taking into consideration the concerns that the mayors and, the mayor and the rest of you have expressed concern about. If they run into any perceived issues, then they can always bring that back to you for further direction. So, I think, I think we're good.
Perfect. Thank you. Very good. In that case, we will move on to reports, suggestions, and requests, and we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to talk about the budget. This commission has had a long stewardship of setting money aside in advance of whenever you get your millage rate, just like your personal paycheck. You put your savings and you put it aside right off the top. Back when Mayor Hood was mayor, they created that plan to set up money for capital, R and R, vehicles, and transportation. And you've continued to do that even in the toughest times. And because of that continued stewardship over the last 20 years, we have been able to develop a budget, meeting all of your priorities, but still making it fiscally sustainable. So, I just want to commend you on that effort. It's really a, an outstanding achievement. You hold staff's feet to the fire on spending, and we appreciate that. And I just want to thank you for that effort. And that's all I have for tonight, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. And our assist, our actual city attorney, Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to report tonight.
Thank you, Randy. And we will start tonight with Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment tonight, and that is that I am, I just wanted to say that I'm really pleased with the presence that our police department has had at the, right out here at the corner of Granada and Beach Street during these recent, I guess I got to call them protests, because they weren't special event, they didn't have special event permits, right? So, so they're protests, although I really, I really think they're expressions of First Amendment done very civilly and, you know, very appropriately. So, but I think the fact that the barricades were put up, the fact that the police cars are there with the lights on, the fact that the police are there in mass numbers, and Chief, I appreciate that, and interacting with the crowds, I think creates an environment in which people feel safe to express their opinions, but they also know that they don't have the opportunity to step out of line and to do something that, you know, that could devolve quickly. And so, I just, I just wanted to say thank you. I think that's the appropriate way for police to, to interact and to act in situations like that, and I'm proud to be a resident and a city commissioner of Ormond Beach when we have a police department like that that behaves that way. So, thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor Kent.
Thank you. Just two items. I want to go back to the setting of our tax rate and setting our annual budget. And, Mr. Mayor, I think this was one of the smoothest, if not the smoothest, public hearings we've had on setting our millage rate and setting our annual budget. I bring that up because I just want the audience to know and our commission members to know, it didn't always run this smoothly. Our financial house was always not in this great order. I speak for myself, but Mayor Partington, then Commissioner Partington, we were elected on the same day 17 years ago, and we inherited a financial house that wasn't in order. And we had some very late, sometimes volatile speakers, because we had to make tough decisions. And who knew that 17 years later, the two of us would still be sitting up here and being able to recall when the financial house wasn't in order, and now when, when it is. They were tough decisions. They were unpopular, our tax rates. We had many public speakers. And it's just a testament to this commission and this leadership of the five of us to be able to give our residents what we're giving them. And Commissioner Littleton, you know, you mentioned, we were able to have, set an annual budget, and we did not defund the police. And I'm so pleased at this commission. Those words put together never, they never came out of anybody's mouth, and that's something I would never support. We have a fantastic police department. We have a fantastic fire department. We have an equally fantastic general employees. You pick the department. Budgeting and finance, public works, recreation, they're all hard workers, and they're all professionals. And that's because we expect great things from the two employees that we oversee, which are our city manager and our city attorney. And they both have high expectations for all of their employees. And my second piece was exactly what Commissioner Selby mentioned, and that is the police department presence during the protests that we've had. And when you're at a stoplight and you're looking at our officers, it doesn't matter what side they're on, they are, you can just tell they are kind. When people are asking them questions, they are actively engaged with them. And it just, it just shows that level of service that Ormond Beach continually has and shares with our community at large. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Persis.
It must be a theme tonight, because I wanted to mention our police department also. And the first word that comes to my mind is caring, because everything they do, they show that they care about the citizens of Ormond Beach. Just with, with a, you know, a very calm protest outside, they're there supporting people, because people do have a right to assemble and let people know how they feel. But it's, but they're there to support them, and of course, they're there, you know, just in case something should happen, and that's always a good feeling, because that's why we love our police departments, because they're there to help us in case we need them. But I do appreciate everything that the police and fire department do for the city of Ormond Beach. I do think we have a stellar staff on both sides. I also wanted to mention too, I don't know if everyone knows, that Chief Godfrey, I think, is a new grandparent. Is that true?
No.
And look at that smile on his face, like, you know, unless you're a grandparent, you don't really know that feeling. So, I just want to say congratulations to that, because I sure know that great feeling. And I just want to say, I think tonight was a great night. I feel like everyone was listened to. Listening's very important to me. I feel like everybody should be valued and listened to, and their opinions should matter. And I feel like we did that tonight as a commission, and whether we always agree or disagree, that's not the issue. It's just that I think we need to listen and make the best decisions that we can for everybody, and I think we did that tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Persis. Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everyone had a great Labor Day weekend. I do want to talk about Commissioner Kent's point. You know, I was talking to somebody, and, you know, we set the tax rate, and that was not the most controversial thing about the meeting. It was item 9A. That just goes, you know, typically, they like to tar and feather politicians when you're setting the tax rate, but no, this commission's house, this commission and staff, we have a lean, mean budget, and we have, you know, I can't say enough about how proud I am, especially during this year, of what we've been able to accomplish. I also would like to talk about the police and DUCs also. This thing they're doing now with getting ducked members of the community, I absolutely, I love it. It's just another example of the police engaged and proactive in the community, which is why we don't have the sort of stuff happening in other cities around the country. Our police care about the community, and they're involved. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I think all of your comments tonight are so appropriate in light of 911 remembrance coming up on Friday. Our country was attacked in a horrific way, and over 3,000 people were killed, US citizens, and first responders, police and fire, were the folks who rushed to the Twin Towers and provided aid that particular day. We're lucky to have in Ormond Beach some fantastic men and women, both in police, fire, and public works as well, administration, who do the same thing or stand ready to do the same thing in our city, really, at any, any moment. And they take a salary for that, but compared to the danger and peril that they're put in, it's obvious that they do it, because they have a passion for public service. And that's to be commended. We're, each of us is very lucky, and we owe a debt of gratitude to those men and women who put themselves in harm way for our benefit, so that we can enjoy the incredible quality of life that Ormond Beach has to offer. And pizza for everybody.
My mom's birthday. They were saying happy birthday.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Well, so, please take a moment on Friday and remember, we say we will never forget, and I truly believe that. It was an incredible, incredible attack, the likes of which we've been lucky not to see since, and be grateful for our, for our police and our fire and our other dedicated staff who do so much for all of us. And with that, we'll say goodnight.